Any items from the public? Uh, approval of the agenda. Everybody had a chance to look at that?
There's no modifications, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes, you do.
And all those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, consent agenda, purchase order. Questions there?
Okay, Mr. Vice President, if I could, just a few things to point out to you on page three. You'll see there's some payments to Crabtree Roarball Associates. There is a payment, it's listed as invoice number nine for the Dunn building in the amount of eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars. That brings the total that we've paid to Crabtree within their contract of three-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars, which we will now be reimbursing ourselves from the American Rescue Plan Act because we're paying for this building, renovations to this building from that. Um, so although we're taking that money out of the general fund, we are in the process of reimbursing ourselves from, for that. Uh, and that, that will go into contingency. Uh, on page six, um, you'll see the payment to the Burton County Solid Waste Authority in the amount of seventy-two thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Um, again, that money is the fiscal year twenty, twenty, twenty-two, twenty-three allocation to the solid waste that was discussed with them last, last week. We did promise them that, uh, we would have the check to them, uh, as soon as possible. So that's under purchase order log. And then finally, on page seven, um, the third item from the bottom, you'll see there's a payment to United Records and Excavators in the amount of fourteen thousand four hundred and thirty-five dollars. If the council will remember, um, probably within the last year or so, we did, we bought another, uh, property down at Sportsman's Paradise located at eleven Sour Lane and had a dilapidated structure on it that's been vandalized a couple of times. Um, we just, we just demolished it. Um, United Records did a really nice job, um, tearing the building down. We, we capped the, the well, um, and, and reseeded that area. So, uh, we now only have one structure down there, which has our caretaker in it on video board, so. That's all right.
And I'm assuming they took the big trash pile that was inside of it?
They did, it's all, it's, they did a really nice job. We also have United Records and Pitts Knuckles looking at the property that we recently purchased on Winchester Avenue, which is the entrance to the new Inwood Park. Um, the lease on that property expires again this month. As soon as the tenant is out of there, we'll be demolishing that, uh, and putting, that's going to be the access road to that. And I'm, I assume that when we start construction, that'll be a construction road for the, for the equipment. So, uh, we have that on the horizon. Um, we're just waiting for reclaim to give us a date. Um, to take a one-twenty-six, um, it took, as you know, it took us a little while to get the electricity off disconnected from that. Um, but Tony McGaddus and did a, a first energy, did a nice job getting that done for us, so.
And what's the situation with the city of Martinsburg about bringing the building?
It's, they're, they're okay with it. It's been resolved. That's, that's all right.
Uh, there are no internal budget revisions. Change in status, a new hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Community Corrections, uh, Director for James Gwynn, as a peer recovery coach and Recovery Resource Center effective July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two, with an annual salary of thirty-seven five oh nine. Change in status received from Tim Zia for Sherry Ruffner and Emma Lardner for salary increases for receiving their peer recovery support specialist certification effective July one, twenty-twenty-two, with the salary changes from thirty-seven five oh nine to thirty-eight thousand nine dollars. Change in status received from Tim Zia for Robert Wynn to transfer from Recovery Resource Center to the Day Report Center as a peer recovery coach with no change in salary effective July twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two. Change in status received from Randy Lilly, Director of Emergency Management for Brian Dehaven, for salary increase due to years of service from forty-four nine oh nine to forty-six three eighty-one, effective August second, twenty-twenty-two. And a letter of resignation received from Emergency Communication, uh, from Tracy Moore, effective July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
Tracy Moore is a shift, shift supervisor, three times fast. Somebody gonna get moved in that position?
Um, we, right now, and you've probably seen the recruitment notice this week, um, we're preparing for our next, um, class of call takers, um, to see what the response is. And as that is ongoing, then Jen will be doing an internal posting to see if anyone's interested in the shift supervisor position.
All right, uh, approval of the amendments, July the seventh, twenty-twenty-two, everyone was here. The, uh, cancel, council calendars, uh, July, today, we are here in, uh, on the twenty-first. Uh, let's see here, there's nothing this evening, uh, Friday, next Monday, uh, four P M., historic landmarks and five P M., Water District, twenty-six, nothing, twenty-seventh, uh, ten A M. C V B. and three P M. Senior Services. And on the twenty-eighth, five P M. Ambulance Authority. And the library board has been canceled. So, what we got there? And a stop payment, uh, check request from the county clerk's finance office. And a bond reduction, Red Hill Phase Six, B C P file, uh, number zero-three-three-dash-oh-five, bond number C I C one-nine-one-two-oh-nine-five, Engineering Department makes that recommendation. We have a bond release, Red Hill Phase Five, lots two-twenty-six, two-eighty-six through two-ninety-two, B C P file zero-three-three-dash-oh-five, bond number C I C nine-one-two-oh-eight-seven, Engineering Department makes that recommendation. We have a bond release, uh, for Red Hill Phase Four, lots eighteen through twenty-seven, forty through forty-nine, and eighty through one-oh-one, B C P file zero-three-three-dash-oh-five, bond number C I C nine-one-two-oh-eight-nine, Engineering Department makes that request. Uh, bond release, Red Hill Section One, Phase Three, B C P file number three-three-dash-oh-five, L O, letter of credit, uh, number six-four-six-zero-zero-eight, and the Engineering Department for that. Uh, bond release, Red Hill Section One, Phase One, B C P file number zero-three-three-dash-oh-five, L O C four-three-one-four-five-nine, Engineering Department. And, let's see, bond release, start warranty, uh, Red Hill Phase Nine, lots two-nine-four through three-ten, B C P file number two-zero-zero-seven-dash-zero-eight-one, tied to B C P file number three-three-dash-oh-five, bond, uh, C I C one-nine-one-two-zero-eight-eight, that's also Engineering Department. Uh, bond release, start warranty, uh, Red Hill Phases Seven and Eight, lots thirteen through seventeen, fifty through fifty-four, and twenty, or two, I'm sorry, two-hundred-and-seventy to two-seventy-five, B C P file two-one-one-two-four-six-one, tied to B C P file number zero-three-three-dash-oh-five, letter of credit, uh, number is eight-zero-zero-one-eight-seven-seven, Engineering Department requests that. Uh, any questions on the bond releases while staff is here?
No, Joe, good. See, you got a bunch of them there.
Let them go. We're happy for you too.
As you all saw last week, I was... Deal with it, addressed. Deal with it, huh?
Inundated? Yeah, all righty. Nothing else on that, uh, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Um, I approve the consent agenda, as long as I don't fire the screen, uh, president.
Pro Tim?
Yeah.
Okay.
Vice President.
Vice President, pro Tim, Vice President.
I'll, I will second that motion.
All righty, well, thank you very much. Uh, all those in favor say aye, like sign opposed?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Uh, correction of assessment logs, uh, we have a, uh, the Honorable Assessor Larry Hess.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Got a couple of things this week.
Yeah, what the heck's going on?
That's busy time.
All righty.
It's our busy time.
Okay.
I understand where the traffic is today. We've been lines all the way back, there's nobody over this morning, so, and I'm not complaining, believe me. Uh, I do have a little bit of everything here today, tolerations, divorces, solidations, and all this stuff there. First thing we have, uh, is personal property, office error. I have actually two pages, and there's eight on the first page, uh, and there's, uh, the balance on the second page, a total of fourteen of personal property, office error corrections that we had to make. Uh, the total, the total, all fourteen of them comes up to two-thousand-three-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and thirty-four cents for those personal property violations.
All righty, we'll have a motion for those fourteen personal tax account tolerations due to office error?
Tell them move.
Second, second, all those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. Real estate tax account tolerations?
I do have, uh, for the office error for real estate, uh, we had two we had to correct for, uh, they had the wrong tax class on them, and, uh, so we corrected those. Uh, it came up to total for both of them, it's three-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and ninety cents for those two.
It's nice that each one was the same amount.
Yeah, just worked out that way.
Um, move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries. I missed a canceled check, didn't I?
Thank you.
I took it.
Yeah, you did.
All right, yes, sir. Thank you, so, sorry about that. Uh, let's see, applications for consolidation of properties.
Yeah.
Two.
Uh, we do, we have consolidation, we had, uh, Gillian McCarty, uh, wanted to consolidate, uh, three parcels there in the Jarrettstown District, map twenty-five, parcel twenty-three point fifteen, twenty-three point twenty-one, and parcel two forty. So, we put those together and, uh, uh, so he can just get on tax bill. So, you want me to read all three of them at one time, or you want to do them for some You want me to read all three of them at one time, or you want to do them separately?
Do the consolidation.
Yeah, do the consolidation, then we'll consolidate.
Alright, so we have that one, McCarty. I have for Billy Bennett, also had some parcels that he wanted to consolidate in the Peckham District, map 15A, there's four of them. Have 17, and then there's three that was part of 19. So we put those four together. And that's all half for consolidations. But I have two, I do have one other consolidation, but I have a deconsolidation for Billy Bennett, if you want me to include that in there. They had a parcel that had a bunch of, it was one big tract. He split them all out and then he put these four back into one section. So we have a deconsolidation, and he also consolidated some of them back. But what he had was he took out, in your Peckham District, 15A from parcel 19, took out lots from 12 through 18 in Oak Ridge Subdivision. And we cut them out, and then he put these other four back. So we got that with Bennett. And I do have one other deconsolidation for Lisa Custer. We, they had, we had two lots put together and we split them back out for reasons that I think she just thinks about selling one of the 11. So I've got those deconsolidations and those consolidations.
So you got two consolidations and two deconsolidations. I'll make a motion to approve the two consolidations.
Second?
All those in favor say aye? Like sign opposed? Motion carries?
And I'll move to approve the deconsolidation.
And I'll make a second to that, it's most important.
Thank you very much. All those in favor say aye? Like sign opposed? Motion carries?
Thank you.
And apportionment of assessment of taxes per final divorce order?
Yeah, we have three of them, had three divorces.
Three?
First one's for Pamela and Manning and Steven Giraw. They have a whole pile of vehicles, you can see. Seven vehicles. So we split the bill up for them. And total assessment for all that was, you know, $16,698 total assessment for all their vehicles. We split them up. Pamela got one vehicle, 2014 Ford Edge at a assessment, assessed value of $5,625. And Steven kept the rest of those at a total assessment of $11,873. We have that divorce, I got the other two, want me to do them too, the same thing?
Yeah.
Alright, so we got another for Courtney Fleming Jonathan, Courtney Fleming, and Atanya Marie Fleming. They just had two vehicles and we split them up and they just split. He got the 2014 Infante with an assessed value of $6,345. She got the Jeep Cherokee, assessed value of $49,50. I need your approval on that one. And I do have one other one for Kathy Lynn Jacobs and Joseph Andrew Jacobs. They had three vehicles, total assessed value of $27,141. Kathy got a 2020 Nissan with the assessed value of $13,311. And he got the other two vehicles, assessed value of $13,300. So I have those three divorces, I need to get your approval so we can split bills up for those guys.
Okay, you've heard the divorce order. Do we have a motion to accept the apportionment?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye? Like sign opposed? Motion carries?
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alrighty, Board and Meeting Reports, Mr. Barnhart?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Whitaker. I had no meetings this week, so.
Well, simple. Give my time to the Honorable Mr. Whitaker.
I appreciate that. I, I, I had two meetings, one of which I was unable to attend because of a conflict with the other meeting. And the other meeting was the airport, the one I did attend. And, and I was lucky enough to be appointed the chair for the next year.
Anything else?
They had a wrap-up of the, had a wrap-up of the
Festivities?
The 250th and the fireworks and all that. And it was, it was good, it was good. I mean, the consensus was a thought process. Of course, you didn't judge, you missed out on it. Eddie was there. Sure. Thought process was that, you know, when you did, figure out a way to do it again.
Quality of life.
Quality of life.
Coming to.
Actually, I had two meetings. Mine was one with the Eastern Panhandle Transit Authority. Of course, the, there's always a saga of meeting matching funds for upcoming grant, grant money that's coming in. The ridership on demand is, is always up right now because of the, the lingerings of COVID. But the ridership is up on, on demands. That's kind of the short story. We have two, two employees that are going to Stonewall Jackson Conference to hopefully be honored this week coming up for their duties as, as they were nominated for, for the, for the Transportation Department. And so that was about the end of that.
What's the status of moving or getting started on the?
They are at 30% completion as far as the design and acceptability of the new location on the corner of Grace and Raleigh. They are, Michael Baker has, that was presented at the, at the meeting. And it looks very nice for what we're going to be having out there on that corner.
Will they maintain the facility on the, where is that?
No, no, that one is going to be used like part of the matching grants. Once it's sold, the, the grant was rewritten in order for them.
So everything?
Everything will be moved to the city corner. It's, it's going to be quite the facility.
How much incentive are you getting from the city of Martinsburg? Anything?
Haven't heard.
It would be, you'd think the city would do something to encourage movement inside.
There was a lot of, and I haven't been on that board in a long time, but I know back, back three or four years ago, it's been that long since the job got started. There was a lot of conversation back then about the city involvement and, you know, helping to get the thing situated and what needs to be done.
Traffic alone, you know, buses coming and going, all that kind of stuff. He says, take some change, then, I guess a stoplight.
Yeah, those buses don't spend a lot of time back in there. Now, they're going to use that as a hub where, where they're at now. They don't use it as a hub, but they, they tend to use that as a transfer hub as well there. But like where they're at right now, I mean, the buses generally go out and they come back.
Yeah, the new facility will be able to house all the buses inside and climate controlled for all weather capabilities. There'll be a wash bay with the oh gosh, it's what I want to use with the recollection of the, of the wash water to recycle it. So it's going to be a pretty good state of the art facility.
The price tag on this can get pretty good.
Yeah, it will be. I haven't heard the final number, but it's, it's forthcoming. So we're hoping that the grants are going to be available for that, or continue to be available for.
Are they doing it all at one time? I know at one point there was thought process that they were going to build a part of this done, and then they were going to have, have future, another part of it done.
You know, it was, part of that discussion was, is that they were going to come up with two concepts. But in order for that to happen, it just wasn't falling right in line with the way that the, the design acceptance was going. So they, they come up with a concept, Michael Baker Group has, and they're moving forward with, I think, the whole thing, so. And then my next meeting was the Airport Authority. We had, like I said, we have a new president or chairman of the board out there, Mr. Del Yeh. Congratulations, as far as are the members.
And what is going to be your list of things to improve?
Well, I'd like to see, I'd like to see more activities on the airport, social activities. I'd like, I'd like to see those type of things. I mean, we, we had a conversation today about, you know, is it a thought process to consolidate some events or, or create more events? I think anything we can do to get the public out there to benefit to what we're doing out there. Talking about an expansion to the terminal building, trying to find out a way to put a flight observation deck out there. To be able to, you know, be able to be on elevated deck and oversee the runway. And then they're, they're working on, right now, the, the educational area, which is, which is a FAA term for a playground. You know, I mean, it's got to educate them on, you know, it's, it's all about aviation related stuff that's going to go out there. And there's some clearing that needs to be done on the airport. Need to find some, need to find some funds to be able to do some clearing that's necessary, which I'm a pilot and, you know, if you're a pilot, you, animals running onto the runway is not a good thing. Or birds, you know, same thing. And we've got some areas that are along Route 11 that the guard used as a, as a overburden dumping area when they built their hangars out there. All that area that's all grown up along Route 11 with fire, transfer the
Station 29?
Yeah, where that's at, that, that whole area right there, they dumped it. And when they dumped all that fill in that area, they never left it out because it had a bunch of debris mixed in it, so they did a very poor job, so we could never mow it. So what needs to go is one of these agricultural clearing machines go through there and knock it all down and brush all the down and then get in there and maybe even cover it with something, you know? Maybe go in there, try to plow it or just, it's been several years, so you might be able to do something with it, but get it so we can mow it so that you don't have wildlife living inside the fence on the airport, you know? We'll tackle whatever else comes on.
Let's see, what else was there? That's about it? The, there was a discussion about the flight school and how well it was doing as far as the, there's a little bit of increased maintenance on one of the, one of the planes that we're going to have to address pretty soon, either replace or continue to upgrade the avionics in it. If it were me, I would, I would probably like to think that we would replace it with something more versatile. That'll give the flight school a, a different avenue of teaching, whether it be we talked about complex, high performance, checkouts and things like that, getting pilots ready from private to more commercial and things like that. We're looking at that. Fuel sales were, were up. I think it's mostly because of the cost of fuels up. I don't think the gallons per se were, were over, over the amount that they were previously. But the cost of fuel is up, so that kind of increases that revenue a little bit. And that was, that was about it.
Good meeting.
And anything else? Meeting reports? Let's see, any appointment of vacancies?
It looks like those appointments that are on the, that are possible are all adding. There is a, it looks like we have an application received from Jason Barrett. We probably go ahead and
Bring him in.
Although it's not, Development Authority is not my board, might as well schedule the
Yeah. We have a couple of reappointments. Reappointment for Aaron Gartner, is that right? For the Criminal Justice Board, that's what we bound aboard though.
Oh, that's right. You keep forgetting Eddie was doing it.
Can I have a motion to reappoint?
Sure move.
Second? All those in favor say aye? And we have a Cora Kowalski. Kowalski, I'm sorry, for the Criminal Justice Board to replace Lindsey Hash? All those in favor say aye? Alright, thank you. And of course, we got Mr. Barrett coming in. We're just a little bit ahead. Mr. Ross, Community Development Building Code Adoption.
Good morning, Counsel.
Good morning.
Today, come for you for the adoption of the new building code. Like to just point out a few facts here before we get into any details or questions that you may have. Berkeley County originally adopted building code back in September of 1990. We have been enforcing building code since that date to current. Purpose of the building code is to ensure public health and safety for the residents of our county. My staff has proven that we are here to work for current and future residents of Berkeley County. This is proven through our basic open door policy that we have in our departments. We daily answer questions pertaining to land development, plan reviews, building code, or even enforcement of the provisions of the existing building code. We also receive multiple inquiries pertaining to outside entities of the county to either answer or offer further direction. My staff consists of 18 people that generated 3,177 building permits last fiscal year from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2022. These efforts produced revenue streaming of $2,396,149.70 for the county. Along with the adoption of the new building ordinance, we recognize everyone who is truly involved in this whole ordeal. The ordinance involves a collaboration of efforts between multiple departments in this county. And I'd like to recognize a few of them. The Engineering Planning Permits Inspections Department, the Stormwater District, the Sheriff's Department, the Court Security, Prosecuting Attorney's Office, County Legal Department, County Administrator, and last, the County Council. Mr. Davis pointed it out to me one time that we have the right people in the right places. And it takes all these people to make this ordinance work. We have came across a, with the population growth that we have in the county, we're, we're also dealing with a lot of different diversified mindsets of, of how residents in the county thinks things should be run. And with all these people working together, we're able to answer questions and move forward, or else try, find solutions to these people's questions that come at us each and every day. My staff, they, they do a wonderful job. And, you know, they're, they're always there. They're always there to, to help out. And that, that's, that's the main purpose. We're not just here as an enforcement measure. We're also here as an information, information measure for all the residents. And I, I guess the best way to sum it up is, is if we all weren't doing a good job, you guys would hear about it. And I haven't had pretty much too many conversations with any of you up there pertaining to residents being unhappy with, with what we do for the county.
Well, I've got to say, anytime that I have had a phone call and I've given you a heads up, it's usually always addressed and taken care of enough. I don't really care about it anymore, so kudos to your old staff and crew, so thank you.
Yes, they, there's a wealth of knowledge between those departments. And everybody, everybody does their job. Granted, I can't spend personal time with all 18 every single day, but they come in, they do their work, and they go home.
I think once somebody understands that there's certain things that you can and cannot do, you know, on legal terms with, with a private individual on their own property. I mean, we would all like to have everything all nice and neat and pretty, but sometimes it just doesn't work out that way. But it's that person's right to be able to do what they can, as long as it's not hazardous or creating an issue with safety with their neighbors.
Correct. And a lot of time, if there, if there's any Correct. And a lot of time, if there, if there's any conflict to a resolution, we come in, we invite them in and we sit down and we talk about it. And we, we come to terms with, uh, some form of agreement.
Yep.
To move forward with things.
And, and we've changed the whole culture of planning and engineering improvements over the past 18 years. It's a, it's a 160 degree difference than it was. I mean, Brian has, has been instrumental in, you know, he spends a lot of time in the field, not as much as he would like, but, um, a lot of time in the field discussing issues. Um, Jay Blaisen comes with a lot of data properties and, and things like that. And, and that one on one, um, and, and, and they truly have the, take the approach that we're here to help. We're, we're not here to tell people what they have to do and, and then leave them on their own to figure out how to do it. They're, they go out of their way to assist and, um, and, and it starts at the top and, and Brian has a, has a lot to do with the change in the culture over there.
I believe you can solve problems quicker with face-to-face contact than via text message, email, or any of that sort. I prefer to just get in the car and go out and meet with you. And that's the way most of my staff is, and that's how we get things done.
And anybody knows is when they come in this office, he sits with his door open. And they don't hesitate to, to make a bead line down the hall to, to talk to him. You know, many times I'll walk out, look down the hall and he's got someone sitting there and there's chairs in front of him and they're going through, you know, plans laid out on his desk and they're going through issues, so.
I, and I agree, we've made big changes in the past several years. Um, I, I feel that we are, um, we are a bit understaffed at this point. I think that, you know, when you start looking at how long it's taking for approval and those type of things right now, I think we're starting to stretch out again. And I think that, I think that, you know, if, uh, if this economy continues the way it is, I think there's, we, that we have to be looking at expanding. What are your thought processes on turnover from time to time?
They, they have increased and I think a lot of that had to do with the increase of interest rates. Um, people getting, I had a couple of my track builders dump 40, 50 houses on us within a couple of days. Granted, that's going to throw your turnaround time out. Um, my staff is working overtime. Um, I do agree, in fact, Mr. Davis and I will probably be meeting here in the near future about our EIT position to get that posted. Um, we did hire an extra building inspector to be out in the field, which is in turn going to be working on plan re, small plan reviews also. Um, but I do see through the planning department, we, there's a lot of platted ground coming in. And I honestly don't think in this area, even with materials, interest rates, market conditions, I don't think it's going to slow down that much.
And, and we've been watching and Brian and I meet probably at least once a week.
At least, yeah.
And, and talk about things. Um, you know, we, we've been, we've been wanting to see the impact of, of LAMA, um, which is the new software system that's been in place now for about 18 months, um, to see what that does with processes, um, with this whole reorganization of, of that division earlier this year. Um, we did authorize the additional, as Brian mentioned, one additional building inspector. Um, we are in the process, we will be recruiting soon for what we call an engineer in training to help with plan review and do some succession planning. So, um, we, we don't want to overstaff so that if there is a correction in the economy, we don't have too many people like we found ourselves in, you know, a, a number of years ago. But at the same time, we want to be adequately staffed. So we are continuing to provide the services, particularly to some of the commercial development that will be on the horizon. Um, as, as you know, as we meet with commercial developers, um, you know, we do commit to, uh, timely inspections pretty much 24/7, which is what, um, John Dick did when, when P and D came on board. So, um, you know, we, we want that balance. We don't want, we don't want a lot of, a lot of lag when it comes to processing of plans, the review of plans, processing permits. So, um, and Brian does a real good job of, of keeping, keeping on top of that.
One of the things I still think we're falling behind in, and I've said this probably, you know, probably for eight years now, that, that, uh, I, I really think we should have third-party inspections when it comes to foundations. You know, foundations for a contractor are one of the more difficult things to do. You get a, you get a set of footers in, you have to put all the steel in, you do all the work you need to do to prep that thing. And then you can't get an inspection until the following day. And you get, you get a rain, a significant rain over that evening. And then you got to start, come back and you got to pull all that steel out and cancel your inspection and, you know, process that all over again. Whereas, you know, in, in a lot of the other communities that I built in, um, we can, we can go out and schedule to get a, uh, we can schedule to get a set of footers in, in the morning. We can have the inspector, the third-party inspector set up to come out, um, at lunchtime and have concrete on, on wheel call for the afternoon. And we can go and put a whole set of footers in in the same day. And, you know, you can assure that you're not going to, um, have to, have to do those footers two or three times. Um, and I've had to do footers three times before in Berkeley County where you get them ready and then you go out and clean them out because it rained and then you cancel and then you go out and do it again. Not, not for several years, but I've had to do that a few times over my career. So, it, you know, it would be nice that, uh, for us to look at some point down the road, how to do third-party for the, um, for the foundations, you know what I mean?
Yeah. And I think if you would, if you would look at our LAMA schedule, like take for instance, commercial. I have three different guys that go out and do commercial and I have up to five people that can do residential. And if it, I'd be more than willing to share it with you. If you look, my guys are more apt to take care of the footings, vertical walls and that now, before doing rough ends, insulations, finals, we're doing better at, you know, that, because they, especially now currently, there's been some people that if they don't get that inspection, they're be waiting up to two weeks for concrete again. Some of your smaller, some of your smaller builders and that. So we do look at that and we take importance to that.
Well, and I get that, but that's still the next day. I mean, it's still the next day. So you, you, what you're doing, what you're doing is, I mean, if you, if you look at the code, the code says you can't order an inspection until the inspection is ready, correct?
Right.
So if I'm going to do, if I'm going to do the inspection, if I'm going to do a set of footers today, I can't, I can't call and order an inspection until after I get done with those footers, right?
Right.
If it rains tonight, what happens?
Depending on the amount, I guess.
Uh, exactly, exactly. So you, you have that to deal with the next day, you know what I mean? So it, it is an issue. I mean, it is, it is a real issue that, that, you know, there's a lot of other things that go on back and forth and you can work through, but that, that one factor is totally weather. And, and in all fairness, I can do a better job of those footers if I do it on a dry set of footers as opposed to having to go out and remove stuff and start to clean out and do all that. And then you end up with some debris left in the footers and, you know, it's just not as good a job for the customer.
Right. In our bigger commercial projects, we do, we do accept third, they do third-party inspections. Cause just take, take for instance, a Stewart Farm. They're, they're, they're pouring, they're pouring at night. They're pouring at six in the morning. So we get down there, we take their reports and we inspect the sections that we're at when they're down there pouring.
Any other questions or?
So, so what are we here today for?
To, um, motion to adopt.
Adopt.
The building codes.
What's the change?
Some of the changes from, uh, 15 to 18, um, some of the.
Entire states going to this.
What's that? I'm sorry?
Entire states going to the 18 building code effective August 1st.
Correct, correct. Sorry.
Should have started with that, sorry.
Um, as of August 1st, the state adopted the, the new building code. That, for Berkeley County, that would mean that we're going basically from the 15 to 18 in buildings, which would be your residential, commercial. Um, the energy codes went from 09 to 15. Um, so your R values are going to be changing a little bit.
Increased?
They're going to be increased, yes. You're basically going from a minimum R13 in a cavity wall to an R19. A lot of people are already asking, can that still be achieved with a 2 by 4 wall? Yes, it can. It all depends on, let's say, basically you take a 2 by 4 wall with R15, uh, 716, so B has minimal R value, type R has minimal R value. You may have to do an insulated siding or a, a dowel board or a Celotex on a 2 by 4 wall to meet that R value.
My house is 2 by 6s. When it built, that would be five years.
And we're already dealing with a lot of 2 by 6 framing already in the field. And then, or you could intro, introduce something as a one-inch closed cell foam with a bat in a 2 by 4 cavity to, to achieve that R value. It's just not automatically jumping to a 2 by 6 wall in that aspect.
The biggest problem with, that I see with the 2 by 6 walls is really that you can't, uh, you can't buy doors off the rack for nobody stocks.
No, without jam extension.
Yeah, you have to get a jam extension for a 4 or 9 jam for that. You are correct. Same thing with.
Biggest issue. Well, I can, I can tell you that I haven't seen this building code. I haven't had an opportunity to review it, so I can't, I can't vote on that today. I mean, I, whenever you guys want to do it.
I mean, if you can't vote.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not willing to vote on it today. Sounds like about the table. My computer's not even working, so.
Oh, well, that's, that's too bad.
It, it did some kind of download. I was trying to get it running, but it don't work.
Can we, uh?
Table until next week?
Table until next week. Cause that, that's not going to throw you out too far, is it? Been this long, so.
Right.
Motion to table till next week, uh, pending individual review.
So.
All those in favor say aye. Like sign a post. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You'll be here next week, right?
Uh, let me take a break. Let's, uh, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Let's keep going with it.
Two matters and then we don't have anything for executive session, so I don't want to.
Okay. Mr. Davis.
Put the heck out of here.
Um, just, you know, two, two matters for your attention. Um, the first is the general fund, um, state budget revision number one for fiscal year 2223. Uh, as the council's aware, uh, last week we did the coal severance, uh, fund balance declaration. Um, this week is the general fund, um, unencumbered fund balance as of June 30th, um, which has to be submitted to the state auditor's office for July 30th. Um, as you can see from the information in your packet, um, the findings of tax department provided us with a fund balance effective June 30th or July 1st of $7,157,765 with $1,197,759,000 or $759 in approved encumbrances. This leaves an unencumbered fund balance as of June 30th of $5,960,006 as part of your budget, um, preparations, uh, earlier this, uh, calendar year. We projected unencumbered fund balance of 5.5 million, uh, leaving a remaining balance of $460,006, which must be recognized as part of state budget revision number one, uh, unencumbered fund balance. I'm recommending that, that, um, that balance of $460,006 be distributed with $72,657 going to the Solid Waste Authority as their lump sum distribution for fiscal year 2223 and the remaining balance of $387,349 going into contingency.
Okay. I refer to the recommendation for the resolution.
Mr. President, on move to, um, I just proved state budget revision number one?
Yes, sir, to fund the original.
And a motion.
As divided by Mr. Davidson's.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Sounds good.
Sounds good. All those in favor say aye. Like sign a post. Anything else?
Um, one other matter, um, earlier this year, we had, um, several discussions over a number of meetings regarding the capital and land development projects for, um, the, the coming years. The council has tentatively, uh, approved renovations to the Crawford Building for port expansion as well as LED lighting upgrades to 380 West South Street and 510 South Raleigh Street. And, um, renovations to 110 West King Street for the Berkeley County Heritage Museum. The council has, um, directed me to do an RFP, um, to borrow, uh, 10 million, uh, up 10 million dollars of, uh, bank qualified monies this fiscal year and then early in fiscal 23 or calendar 23, I borrow an additional 10 million dollars of bank qualified funds, uh, to pay for, um, renovations, improvements in equipment of 110 South or West King Street, 380 West, West South Street, 510 South Raleigh Street and 315 West Stevens Street. As you know, anytime we borrow bank qualified monies, I typically come to the council and, and ask that you do a resolution that will allow us to reimburse ourselves for any general fund monies that may be, um, uh, expended for those projects. And that's all this resolution does. Um, this resolution allows us to reimburse ourselves, reimburse the general fund from the proceeds of any taxes of revenue bonds to be issued for those projects. Um, and, and I typically, we, um, although we'll be borrowing 20 million dollars, we typically increase that slightly. So you'll see that, uh, the maximum aggregate, uh, principal amount of 25 million dollars is listed in the resolution. We've done many of these in, in the past.
Okay.
So requesting adoption of the resolution as president.
Motion to accept the, uh, recommendation for, uh, adoption of the resolution.
Have a motion, grab a second. Issue it. All those in favor say aye. Like sign a post. Resolution carries.
And we have no items for executive session today.
Well, you know what that means? Mr. Barnhart. Oh, well, I'm sorry. Stand corrected. Is there any items from the public? No. We are in recess. Thank you all. You're indulged.